...seven thirty-two, the Wednesday, February fifteenth business meeting of Norbert Borough Council. Mr. Metcalf, can you call the roll?
Mr. Weisbauer is absent. Mr. Wettrey?
Here.
Mr. Cilio is present by phone. Ms. Richmond is absent. Ms. Fortner?
Here.
Ms. Moffett?
Present.
Mayor Grady?
Present.
Matt West?
Present.
John Walco?
Present.
And President Vier?
Present.
All right, thank you. I have no comments specifically this evening. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
No requests, but we have been getting some inquiries with regard to stop sign usage in the borough to mind our residents to please come and please stop. Come spring, you'll be seeing targeted areas with regard to stop signs. We don't do this much during the winter time because our patrols go up and down neighborhoods with regard to making sure of coverage and so forth. But I just request everyone, please stop. We've got a number of requests, especially when I was away, to address that matter. Our officers do address it when they see it, but for the care and for the benefit of the community, we request everyone just to stop when it says stop. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. I believe we have a swearing in. I've an appointed official, is Roberta Dunn here? I see her in the back. Would you like to step forward? Roberta is being appointed to serve on the Norbert Industrial Development Authority. Mr. Grady will do the honors.
Good. Put your hand on. Just to keep that true. Yeah. Kind of.
So it's on the video.
The folks playing it, help.
I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that I will discharge and the duties of my office with fidelity. Right, congratulations. Very much.
I don't think she knew the oath.
The next section is public comment, and I will start at the front and work my way back. When you stand up, it would be helpful if you could state your name, your full name, and your address. Thank you. Mr. West from the second row. Mr. Duffy, Mr. Davis, third row. Any public comment, third row?
Christine Redd, forty Norbert Park.
Could you stand up?
Christine Redd, forty Norbert Park.
Thank you. Did you have any comments or if you just wanted to?
I'm here about the stormwater situation. Stand up, please. Thank you. I'm wondering about the stormwater for four twenty-four Conway and if it's been properly reviewed.
Okay, so I believe that is on the agenda this evening, so I expect to hear more. Anyone in the rear row, any public comment? Okay. Closing public comment, moving on to number seven A. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the January fourth and January eighteenth meeting of Borough Council.
I move that Borough Council approve the January fourth caucus meeting and the January two business meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have. Another one from Finance Administration.
I move that Borough Council approve the January twenty-seventeen schedule of bills and authorize the treasury to issue checks and pay all bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the scheduled bills.
I'd just like to make my positive, that you're a bonus for one of our employees from this year, so congratulations to Mr. Noble and to my partner.
All in favor? Go ahead, Charlie.
I'd like to thank the office actually on the schedule of bills and the package for the meeting generally, for distributing all the documents as well as, and posting it to the website. So I think it's a step towards helping not just members of the council, but also the community who are interested to check out the agenda if they have the time, but also look, the office has not been posting meeting packets, including the scheduled bills by the final plan. Really appreciate all the effort that went into the building process, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the office, you know, had requested that we change kind of our meeting schedule this year, and that it would help them to do their jobs better, and it's nice to see that once we changed the meeting schedule, it's very similar. So thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving the scheduled bills?
Aye.
I have.
Begin.
Yeah, go for it. No, building is, oh yeah, you're building.
Yep. I move that Borough Council adopt attached resolution twenty-seventeen zero zero two final plan approval for consolidation and land development of thirty-one Price Avenue and four twenty-four Conway Avenue to construct nine units and three detached family dwellings.
Is there a second to put this on the table?
I'll second to put it on the table.
Okay, and now we can have a discussion. This one's not going to go the earliest quickly. I'm going to ask Mr. Walco to kind of just brief us on where we are in the process legally, and then maybe we can have some questions from to the Borough Manager and the Borough Engineer.
So as Council Mayor, the third time that we've seen this plan, it came before us for the sketch plan. Additions were made based upon feedback of the planning commissions in our borough engineer came back supplementary plans, or additional comments were made that required under our subdivision land development ordinance and zoning code to comply with subdivision and land development ordinance. Those revisions were made, they then again complied with those requirements for the planning commissions. So now they're back for the third and what would be the final plan review. This is the last opportunity for that they need to make revisions before this plan is reported and then of record. This plan has been reviewed by the Borough Engineer, who's present in the audience today and can speak to the concerns of council regarding the engineering in general, including specifically the stormwater management. It's been reviewed by the Borough Planning Commission, who approved contingent upon the Borough Engineers' review, as well as the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I have been in contact with the attorneys for the applicant, and there are still things that would need to be done prior to the recording of the plan, that approval of this plan is contingent upon. So if council decides to approve this plan, it would be the final plan contingent upon them complying with the remainder of the comments in the Borough Engineer letter, addressing any concern to the satisfaction of the Borough Engineer, addressing any comments or recommendations in the Planning Commission's letter, complying with any other permits and codes that they need to comply with. A major issue in the next step would be to enter into a financial security agreement with Borough Council whereby they'd have to agree to our terms for the terms of certain areas of construction, but more importantly, to actually post an escrow amount for certain improvements, which I believe included in that would be for inspections of the stormwater maintenance facilities, because under an operation maintenance agreement that they also have to enter in with the borough, they have to pay for us to inspect these stormwater facilities every three years, and that's actually going to rotate and be inspected every eighteen months by their management, so it's going to be an additional inspection schedule. So besides that financial security agreement terms, they also have to comply with our Borough Stormwater Management Ordinance. I did review preliminarily the homeowners association declaration associated with this project and the terms related to the, it's called best management practices or B and P agreement, which again are those components that go into the stormwater system. They have to enter into an agreement with us that amongst other things gives the borough the right to enter the property, to inspect for those inspections, and if they aren't meeting our satisfactions, if they're not doing it the work themselves, then we have the right to go in to do the work and to collect from them the cost to do it. So we have that protection in the agreement, we have contract, but there's also the protection of this also being in the homeowners declaration, so it's actually part of the covenant against the land that that homeowners association needs to do that. So we then have enforcement remedy even after those ten years. It's in perpetuity, so we have to inspect for the next ten years. But after that, if it's not to our satisfaction, if the rates aren't getting cleaned out, if we think they're not being kept up, if there are reports of problems, we can still send our staff out to look at it, tell them to fix it, and if they don't fix it, then we have the right to do it, and it's the trust association to do that. So there are different levels of protections for that. So again, if, the approval will be contingent on them agreeing to do all of this, and a lot of these things have to be done before the final plan is recorded, which really then takes us to the next step. So that's a thorough review of what the relevant resolution does, and again, if there are any questions regarding the storm water management, I think that's better corrected to our Borough Engineer, who's here and ready to speak about any concerns that council may have.
Let's, I'll take questions directly for John first, and then we'll call on Mr. Walco.
John, you have the letter from the Planning Commission. I was at the Planning Commission, you know, all of us also. My view was a little bit half-hearted, they had got the information from the engineer response to the Planning Commission had just been distributed. There was a letter that came from one of the nearby residents, from an engineer, that had just been distributed. I left that meeting here, and they had too many open-ended questions to really put a true affirmation forward, so I didn't know what to do.
This is February thirteenth.
So this is February thirteenth, is that copied and pasted?
I, but the, but the.
Not the meeting back, but on the site, on the site with all the, on the cell.
I was going to say, is there?
The conclusion was that a motion was made consecutive to approve the final submission to Borough Council contingent upon further favorable recommendations from the Borough Engineer and from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. The County Planning Commission, I think, but the Borough Engineer letter was still outstanding at that time, so the motion was carried by unanimous vote. So again, they didn't see any other issues within their expertise to recommend to council, but obviously they're deferring to the Borough Engineer.
So if we have a letter from the Borough Engineer, they'll be buying the approval.
From his review letter of what would be the final plan.
I have another question, John. Mr. Developer, you mentioned we'd have to perform these inspections every eighteen months, and where do those reports go?
Development.
Oh, sorry, not the development, my, you're right, you're right, PHOA. We'd have to perform these inspections, and where do those documents go? Do they come to the borough? Do they come to the public? Do they just go within the association? Where do those documents go?
The operation and maintenance agreement, I believe, with, I talked to Fred, but we would have a right to have those inspection reports. This project's small enough that just barely, that it's not being supervised by the Department of Urban Protection, DCP, so there aren't mandatory permits that they have to go through with them, but we then have the right for those inspections. Clearly, it's in their best interest to keep records of those reports, because when we go out to do our inspection, we're going to want to know, you know, were there any issues last time that needed to be fixed.
Right. Yes, they're good. Thank you, John.
Okay, so at this point, I would like to ask Mr. Walco if he has any comments, or if you could summarize where he stands on the issue, any outstanding issues that he feels he has the opportunity to work with the developers, et cetera.
Hi. We reviewed the final plan and issued a planning review letter on February seventh. We recommended moving forward with the final plan contingent upon addressing several comments that we had in our review letter. I think everybody is concerned about storm water. One of the comments that we had had was there are two stormwater management basins proposed on-site, both of them infiltrate runoff into the ground and control the peak rate of runoff as per the code requirements. One of our recommendations was to take the one basin, which was nearest to the adjacent properties. I think it is approximately forty-five feet away from the property at thirty-three Price Avenue. We recommended that that basin not infiltrate, because we had received a letter indicating that groundwater infiltration into their basement was a concern. And a basin being forty-five feet away, but eleven feet above the basement floor, isn't typically a concern of ours, simply because when water gets into a basin and infiltrates into the soil below the basin, it moves laterally at the same rate that it moves down. So anything moving ten feet or eleven feet below the basin would only move laterally eleven feet, and because it's forty-five feet away from the building, we didn't see that as a concern. That, however, if there's an impediment that, say, rock underneath the basin, or the groundwater table flows in the direction of that property or that building, then it's possible that the groundwater from this basin could be transported over toward that building. Having said that, we didn't believe it was a concern, but because it is a concern to the adjacent property owner, and that we, and we reviewed the systems and believed that the code requirements for recharge could be met by diverting all of the recharge to the other basin. That's what we recommended was, that we basically put a liner around the infiltration, or put a liner around the stormwater management system that is closest to thirty-three Price Avenue, eliminate the recharge or the infiltration from that basin, and provide the stormwater management requirements for release rate and for just surface runoff control within that basin.
Right. Council members, do you have any particular questions?
So, I mean, the concern is, with this new construction, more water will be coming into them, and they'll be capturing it in their houses. You're the engineer, confidently, or tell us that that won't happen, slightly, right?
Well, the code requires that, I'm not talking about, you as an engineer, looking at this plan.
Right.
Do you feel that this is going to? Now, there's many ways that water can get into the basement, whether it comes through the walls, because concrete has voids in it, and so any water on the outside could theoretically find its way into the inside, or.
What?
Existing groundwater table that is above the basement floor, then they're getting water in their basement. So for surface, or it could come in through surface, through the surface, and not necessarily be from this property, but from adjacent properties that are upgraded from now. Again, if there's a crack in the wall, or if the surface is directed towards their property or towards their house, then theoretically they could be getting water into their basement from that. So in looking at this plan, I believe that the stormwater management systems in place provide less rate of runoff from the property than what's existing now, and infiltrates more water into the ground, reduces the volume of water coming off of the property. And with the landscape plan, that's not necessarily included in the analysis for the reduction of the volume of storm water, but it's a robust landscape plan, which I believe will also have a positive impact on reducing both the volume and the rate at which stormwater runoff comes off of the property.
You've sent a letter that was sent by one of the residents, the homeowners associations, the engineer letter, sent February sixth. Is that, is it accurate?
I think that, you know, there's enough language in that letter that says, you know, under certain circumstances, could, would, may have an impact. I think it's very difficult to prove one way or the other. I think that's why we kind of made the recommendation to divert the recharge or infiltration to the other basin, because if they're already getting water, it would be difficult to measure that water, how much water they're getting on certain storms.
We don't have any water there. I'm trying to see.
I'm taking any comment from the public at this time.
There was a comment in that letter about the basement floor of thirty-three Price Avenue. Is that the comment that caused you to put that new condition about doing the additional recharge in PCSM two?
Yes.
So that concern was addressed or will be addressed in the final plan?
Correct.
But is also your opinion that it's hard to know either way whether that actually could be the case?
Correct.
It just is possible with this plan to make that change?
Correct.
To address that concern?
Exactly.
Charlie, do you have a question?
There was another concern in that, sorry, can I just address?
Go ahead.
The question that you just had. There was no point in that letter that raised concern for me, that I think, you know, asked the same question of the engineer, which was, does having these basins kind of be a concentrated collection point for the stormwater on these water nation properties? And the discharge from the collection basins and the stormwater collection system during a runoff event, the fact that it's concentrated in a relatively narrow spot, raise the water table downhill from this property? So regardless of what the current level of water is there, which is a little hard to measure, the collection plant potentially have an impact in the middle of a storm of a great water table downhill off this property?
If, if the changes that are made, if the changes that are made to the final plan that we've recommended, and if they've addressed our comments in our review letter, then there will not be an impact. There will not be a raised level of groundwater off of the property.
And that applies also to, we're going to get it right, the folks downhill from PCSM two?
Yes.
That was the question I had, was that we're shifting things from one to two to protect thirty-three Price, or possibly, to possibly address something there. I wanted to make sure we're not then creating a problem for people downhill in number two, and including downhill from number two is the creek, so, was I good?
The property, the nearest property, or the nearest building downstream of stormwater management system number two is, I believe, like a hundred and twenty feet away from the property, or away from the stormwater management system. And going back to what I said earlier, with, you know, water going through the soil depth-wise as quickly as it goes laterally, I think that, you know, it's over three times the distance from basin number one. I don't, and then also looking at infiltration testing that was provided by the applicant's engineer, I don't believe that there's going to be significant impact, or any impact on the groundwater table at the property.
And you don't anticipate that this is going to cause more water to be put into the storm sewer, which then goes into the creek? It's not, the fact that you might change the way PCSM one is done, doesn't, I mean, the line of water is still line of water, is what I think I'm hearing you say.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, I'm like.
From what's existing.
Right. Yeah. No, sir.
Did you get back to this, the engineer from going in the associations?
I did not.
Really good, by opinion, you know, somebody spends a lot of energy and time, you know, you say, these are, we heard you, these are recommendations we're making, you think we'll respond to your concerns, so give them an opportunity to say, agree or don't agree. One of those things, it's helpful making a decision, because if they had an opportunity to comment, you're commenting back, and we have to trust you, you're our engineer.
Right.
And, you know, the homeowners, if anything happens, they're going to come to us, and we're going to come to you.
Yeah.
To talk with the homeowners.
I think one other thing that they had pointed out in their review letter was that they were concerned about surface runoff being directed from the property onto the adjacent property, and given the review of the grading plan and the location of stormwater inlets, we believe that the surface runoff is directed into the inlets, and either directed to a stormwater management system, or, and then the overflow from the stormwater management system is directed into pipes that eventually get down the arbor front, the screen apartment. So I don't see the surface runoff being a concern either.
I just want to make sure everything is addressed, you know, it's.
I mean, I have no problem reaching out to Dave Damon, I've worked with him in the past, I have no problem reaching out to him to make sure that all of his concerns are addressed.
Are there any other concerns or issues that need to be resolved that are worthy of discussion, aside from the stormwater issues?
I think one of the things, basically, the emergency service personnel should approve the baller and how that will be handled as part of the development. The lighting, the proposed lighting, we requested that lighting levels be provided at the property lines to determine, to make sure that there's no light from the proposed lighting plan that escapes the property access.
Okay. All right, any discussion, further discussion amongst council? Thank you. And any further discussion on this motion? I'm sorry, at this time, it's only council.
I want to clarify, Aaron, what the next steps are here, like what, we could regroup, and maybe other people have comments, take those first, but read about the process. Is there going to be a full study of this revised plan? Borough Engineer, compare the revised plan against the concerns that?
I think that's what, that's what has just happened, and we are voting on the final plan.
There are going, there are going to be additional revisions to the plan in line to address, comply with the comments that are in this letter. But after that point in time, as long as the engineer is fine, all of his comments have been filled, it's not going to come back to the council. This would be the final plan.
We are accepting the plan, conditioned upon the Borough Engineer being, feeling like everything has been addressed.
Correct.
This is the last time it'll come to us.
And if, it is the last, so if we were, for example, table this plan, could we do that? For that vote now?
You do.
With the revisions that have been evaluated?
This is, this is sort of the same things with, we talked about in different plans, about having even approvals after a certain amount of time.
I would just.
If it's, and if it is not approved, could it be brought back at the same stage of the process or by approval if changes are made?
So, and we've had this discussion before about whether we're approving it to say that we like it, or are we approving it because we are administratively moving it through a series of hurdles and saying that we're, we're seeing that all the checkboxes have been checked as part of the process. Mr. Walco, could you?
Yeah, I mean, they could always resubmit a new plan. That, I think that, I'm not sure that that would. sure that that would be the route they would take. I mean, we've already approved certain levels of this plan, and obviously if there was something new added to that plan that we didn't already approve, that we could take issue with that, but...
Is this something where we have the right to just say we could vote it down?
What these reviews are, and what the Borough Engineers were doing is to see if it complies with our codes, our zoning codes, our subdivision and development codes, our stormwater management ordinance. If it didn't, they could request waivers, and we would be in position as the local government to grant those waivers. That's not the situation here. They are complying with our codes, albeit or except for these additional minor, for example, details that need to be added to the actual plan itself, that they will comply with prior to that final plan being recorded. My concern would be if this plan was not approved based upon it being compliant with the code, we really wouldn't have any position to, why would we disagree with the own laws that we have set up?
Does that help you, Charlie?
But there are administrative issues to be worked out, not just with Borough Engineer, again, my administrative issues to work out with certain agreements that need to be signed, and again, that land development agreement and the posting of escrows that need to be done, but that's generally done administratively, to make sure that everything's being done according to the plans, and that money is there in case something bad does happen that Borough can then take from those accounts to complete whatever needs to be completed. I believe that landscaping is also included in that escrow, I'm not sure if it is. So again, you know, we can make sure that that landscaping goes in, and if they try to pull something back from the plan, that's not the plan that was approved. This is, again, I can't tell you what has been added or changed from preliminary plans to final plan, but I don't believe it was too many significant items, and they would apply anything else that's important to the plan.
Does that help you, Charlie?
That, do you, the requirements that these administrative requirements include final plan by the Borough Engineer, are those things that we have to specify as part of our approval?